Okay, so I'm last, I'm the new guy. When Mr. Nordby came to us and told us that he wanted us to kind of create a commercial for our academy for this meeting, the thing that I chose to highlight is ways in which we are choosing, and I know this has been going on for many years, to address board goals 4.2 and 5.2, increasing community participation in CTE programs, and then also increasing parent and community engagement. That's kind of been a theme I know throughout the night here. We believe that there are two beneficial outcomes for choosing to address these. Number one, obviously, is for our students. They get those authentic learning experiences that they can't get in a traditional classroom. But also, it provides our stakeholders a great opportunity to come in and see the great things that are going on in our schools, and to be able to experience those things firsthand rather than reading them in the newspapers and things like that. So we're real excited about the things going on at this point. I'm gonna go through a bunch of these things. What I did is I feel inadequate at times talking about these things because I'm so new to the academy. I sent an email out. Most of these things that I'm gonna highlight here, these events have already happened this year, and we're only nine weeks in. And so I'm gonna go through a few slides and kind of read through a bunch of these things. I won't go into a lot of detail. The first one here, we send students, and they've been doing this for many years, I believe, our anatomy and physiology students go to GCCC and get to experience the cadaver lab. Mrs. Jane Snyder and her students host an American Red Cross blood drive, and they've already done that this year, and it was very successful. I believe that's the picture taken from a long ways away there. Last week, we had a new administrator from the Homestead assisted living facility. He's actually out of Wichita, I believe, but he wanted to come talk to us about some new growth that they are going to hopefully be experiencing, new demands with the job or the workforce here in Garden City. He also talked about some of the volunteer opportunities for our students and our staff at Homestead. This Three For Me program, Mrs. Tracy Meinzler, one of our teachers, is choosing to get that started. It's a parent volunteer program where we're asking them to commit to coming and spending some time during the school day with their students and our classes. Mrs. Upton is taking some student, this actually hasn't happened yet, she is taking some students to Kenneth Anderson and Horace Good to do some lessons about modern-day witch hunts, persecution. Just a couple of weeks ago, we hosted a University of Kansas AHEC night at the lab where health professionals came in and judged student presentations. The theme this year was cancer, so they talked about the types of cancer, treatments, and things like that. And the winner of that night is to go on to the University of Kansas and compete there. We, a few of our teachers just hosted a middle school basketball clinic at both middle schools here within the last couple of weeks. Mrs. Jane Snyder also has a health career investigations pass where they go out into different offices around town and get that shadowing experience. On the trade side, we just had a recruiter from the Foley Equipment Company out of Topeka. He came in, and when I heard that he was coming in, I thought, you know, he's gonna come in and talk about the company and job potential there. But what he did really was talk to those students about soft skills and talk to them about interview skills. So I thought that was awesome. I wasn't planning to be able to attend, but I happened to be there, and I stayed for an entire 45 minutes, and he had a lot of good stuff, got a lot of good things to say. Seaboard Foods, lady from Guyman came in and did a presentation on the diverse career opportunities with them. The Western Motor Company came in a few weeks ago and awarded two hundred-dollar gift certificates, one for Mr. Ben John, one of our teachers down there in the trade department, and one for a student. And that was just them wanting to get into our schools and see what's going on. We have a Habitat for Humanity project that is ongoing. It's been going on for several years. Miss Sarah Anderson is heading that up this year. Some of the construction welding classes are building window well covers, handrails, things like that for the house they're currently working on. We just took a group of students to Seward County Community College for a manufacturing We have Mr. Gary Derinsky here, and also Ms. Deb Maxwell. I'm sorry I didn't introduce them. I'm sure you guys are all kind of aware of our new robotics program, some really exciting things going on there. I was, kind of happened on this by chance, I was working late one night, and we had a group of students in our conference room, and they were making a lot of noise, kind of going crazy, really, a lot of excitement. So I went in there, and number one, I thought, is there a teacher in here? Of course, there was. But they were Skyping, was it the guy from Emporia that night? They were Skyping with their iPad with a professor from the Emporia State University of Physics, and he was giving them input and ideas on the robotics project. They also consult with a mechanical engineer from Worthing Industries here in town on those projects. So some really cool stuff going on there with the robotics. I feel really inadequate talking about power plant technology. This is a really cool thing, and I know, and Mr. Nordby touched on it, those are some of the different partners we have involved with that class. Again, Ms. Deb Jarmer, Ms. Deb Jarmer is really active in working with the Fannie County Workforce Connection, building bridges and things like that. They meet in our schools, they consult with our teachers and our students on, yeah, let's just look in at our pictures. But creating those opportunities for our students. And this is where I have, why I have Deb here. She fired off an email to me with so much good information on things she does with our transition to career, some of our special ed programs. She's gonna talk real briefly, I told her she has about a minute, about her three classes here and some of the things that they have going on out in the community in the classroom.
I have my master's in special education, and the way this, our school district has decided to handle transition education is by creating a program that they have the opportunity to take. We have career exploration as the first class, pre-employment skills, life after graduation, and work-based experience. Without the community involvement in my program, it would be a very weak program. Career exploration, the first six weeks we spend focusing on their skills, their interests, and what they think they're interested in, and then we go out and visit on sites. Sometimes they come into the school. So I probably have 25 presentations from around the community. Then on the pre-employment skills, that is mainly in the class, working on resumes and job applications, but the final is a job interview with professionals from the community. And we have a person that's retired from the UPS, and we have the manager from Tetro Plumbing coming in and doing those interviews. And it's interesting, when they're done, they said, would you please ask us back again? They really do enjoy that. Life after graduation is a class that many people chuckle when they find out I'm teaching it. We do budgeting, we do credit cards, we do insurance, all those loans. Now we're working on compound and simple interest, which is just right up my avenue. Golden Plains has taken our class in more than once and talked to them about applying for loans and the terms and all those great words that you all like to deal with. And the city has also worked with us when we're visiting with them about paying taxes. So without the community involvement, which is what he asked for in the email, the program would be very weak because we take them right out and try to register them to vote, show them where they pay their car tags and taxes, and so it becomes very real.
Just another note, those people, I mean, those professionals that come in to our building are blown away every single time. They talk about, of course, our facility is very impressive, but the programs that we have going on there, it's just, it's amazing to hear their reaction every time that they come in. And one other thing, I know we're way over time, that came across my desk late this afternoon. I don't know if some of you went to the football game this past Friday, noticed there was a little table over by the concession area. We had three young men raising money for a fellow classmate. He has been, he is having kidney issues, basically. And so they took it upon themselves to set up the table that night and solicit donations. Well, his older sister is a senior, and I believe he's a sophomore. His older sister came in my office and gave me three names and said, Mr. Meng, can you make sure that these students get positive referrals? I said, well, sure, you know, what's going on? And I knew that that had happened, but I didn't know that that's what she was talking about. And they were able to raise in that one night thirteen hundred dollars for this family. And so that's just one more example of the great things we have going on. Mr. Nordby?
All right. Well, as you can see, we've got a lot of really good things going on at Garden City High School, and a lot of things that we just do within Garden City High School and people don't know about. But we've got, we've got so much going on. I've got an outstanding administrative team, I've got tremendous teachers, I've got the best kids in the state of Kansas. We're doing things that no one else can do. The only FM radio station broadcasting from a school in Kansas, hosting the Supreme Court. We've got artists from Juilliard coming in, working with our kids. Nobody else can say that, nobody else can do that. We pull that off, that's what we do. We have a lot of schools pride, a lot of student engagement. You heard the hashtag mentioned, hashtag GC Buff Pride. We decided with our speaker at the beginning of the year, as Mr. Kidd mentioned, if you're not telling your story, someone else is. So if you're telling it, you can tell it correctly, you can get the message you want out. So we created this hashtag to be essentially a depository for all the good things going on at Garden City High School. So if you wanna know what's happening up there, what's happening today, things are being put on there all the time, so much that, you know, we've decided to start creating a newsletter. Every two weeks, we've created a newsletter of all the different tweets and all the pictures and all the things that we put on there, and we send out, send out to staff. But you can get on Twitter and see what's going on at the high school on that day. And, you know, as I mentioned, my admin team is great, my teachers are tremendous, my students, as I said, I've got the best kids in the state of Kansas. We get a lot of support from here at the ESC, but I can't say enough about what our kids are doing. They have taken, and I've talked to several groups about it, servant leadership, doing things for other people, leading from behind, making someone else better for what you're, with what you're doing. And our student council has just taken with that and just run, and our student body as a whole has taken that and just, you know, they have really done a great job. And for those of you who went to the homecoming, homecoming game on Friday, I think you got to witness our students in action. They were doing a great job on the field, but then off the field, too. What a lot of you didn't admit, didn't get to see is this picture here. This picture here took place about 20 minutes after the game ended. The whole crowd left except our students and the band and the team on the field. And the band kept playing, and the students kept cheering, and the whole stadium is empty. And the band is still playing, and the cheerleaders are, the students are still cheering until the boys were released from their meeting, and the football team all ran up to make sure they had a picture taken with the student body. And that was really neat to see. And one more, one more final push for GC Buff Pride. If you wanna know what's going on, get on there, and we've got great things happening. Questions from anybody? We, you guys, honestly, we talked about this, talked about this, and we shot like 25 minutes. Blew that one, didn't we? Blew that one, didn't we? Yeah. And this is only the first nine weeks. Yeah, this is just the first nine weeks. Yeah. That's what we got done in the last nine weeks.
All that colored powder that was in the air, that final shop was created in my kitchen, and I was convinced my son was gonna get in trouble. Convinced.
We had a south wind.
We had a south wind. And we did, we made sure it was blowing away from.
I found out in town, and I was like, what am I gonna do when you get called in?
But that was another instance of students came to me and said, we have an idea. And I gave them parameters, and they ran with it, and they did it themselves. We'll do it when the band is on the field, we won't do it when the band is next to us. Before we do it, we'll check with Mr. Meng, he'll look at the flags, the winds, they, they looked at the weather report with me. The wind's supposed to blow out of the south, it's supposed, it's supposed to go to the north, and so the kids did all that. They said, can we do this if we do this, if we do this, if we do this? And, yeah, the students who were leading things, you know, they took other people into, into consideration, and they, they had a good time within the rules.
I have heard unofficially that we are the second most spirited high school in Kansas. Is that just a rumor?
Well, we've been, we've been identified a couple of times by Catch at Kansas. They go to all the football games, and so this year, they started a student section ranking, and actually, it was the Scott noticed it, and she challenged me to challenge our students to see if we can't get the attention and be one of the top 10 student bodies as far as attending games. And we have consistently been in the top 10, even on road games. We have a ton of kids come down and be at road games, and they've noticed that, that even if we're playing in haze or liberal, we still were ranked inside there. We haven't knocked Derby off yet, but that was the objective this week, is to do something with the colored powder and the neon that would, that would knock Derby off of their place, so we're working on.
Life is always open.
But that's, that's another thing, though, the school, the kids took that as a goal. We wanna show that we're the best school in the state. We want everyone to acknowledge us for doing things right and the right way, and our school's spirit. And I think that's, that's a worthy goal, I'll support them with that.
Well, it's awesome to see the kids working with their leaders' view and doing it in the right fashion, which tells me that the relationships are there, or they wouldn't be able to do that. So they're getting more from you in academics, but that's our big picture.
We're all going, we're all pulling together, I think that's correct.
Just thanks, everybody, for being here, teachers, thank you for taking time to participate for all the work you do with our kids. It really means a lot. And I, some people may or may not know this, but Mr. Derinsky, aren't you the, also the drone pilot?
That's another part of our school's spirit and our school's, and our school's pride is doing those things. The pictures and things that come out of there, we're really proud of.
Mr. Singh, will you please thank Isaac for taking time to come and talk to us?
I most certainly will.
Because he kind of snuck out without really getting to get our name.
Yeah, he's gotta go get ready.
Because he's gonna be one of those kids that we say, I knew that kid!
I really do think so. I really do. I think he's gonna be a name.
Yeah, thanks. Mr. Nordby?
At the outset of your, your talk, you talked about academic advancement, service, innovation, and spirit, and I really think that this presentation showed all of those areas, that you covered them really well. It's, it's very impressive to me to see, not only that some of the work in the academies could be integrated into other academies and throughout the school, that was really, you know, a great concept, but then to spread it out to the community and really to the state level, that, that's wonderful. You're getting Garden City on the map, and that has benefits for, for all of us in the community, not just those in education, but I think everybody. So congratulations, it sounds really exciting over there, and it really is great to be a Buffalo guy.
It is, and we're doing a lot to be proud of.
Thank you, thank you all.
I don't believe we have any more speakers. Then we move on. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Captain President, I knew we approved the consent as previously, and I know just, there is a second? Thank you, is there any question? All in favor of approving the consent agenda? Any of you? And we will move on to the curriculum report.
Keep it going!
That's a pretty tough act to follow. Now I have state assessment information. So Ann and I are gonna talk to you a little bit about state assessments. Starting in 2010, the State Board of Education adopted our current Kansas and college readiness standards. We had previous standards, certainly under the No Child Left Behind Act, we had standards. But part of their decision-making process was, they didn't feel like those standards were rigorous enough to get us where we needed to go in post-secondary education and certainly in some of the career paths that our kids are taking. So they've adopted those new standards. 2015, this past spring is the first year, it's gonna be called a benchmark year for us to collect data, that's the first assessment that we've taken based on the new piece, the new test, and also those new standards. We did do an assessment in 2014, however, there was a little glitch statewide with the testing mechanism, and so we did not receive any data based on what we had done. So that's why 2015 is going to be, is going to be that first year, that benchmark year. Something that's important kind of to think about here is that this is a major shift in Kansas education right now with the new standards and certainly this new testing format. If any of you have ever seen the video about building an airplane while it's flying, that's a little bit how this is right now. We're gonna give you the best information that we have, as well as our building principals and our staff as we go through this process, but there's a lot that has changed. And we'll detail some of that tonight a little bit for you in terms of how the results are going to be given to the community, how the testing is different than the past tests that we've taken, and so we'll talk a little bit about that. With this new assessment, it's important to understand that we can't compare the results from what we're doing starting this past spring and the information that we're going to get, that was been released on October 1st, I'll talk to you a little bit about timeline here a little bit, but we can't, we can't compare those results. And some of the reasons for that is it's new standards, so we're testing our kids over those new standards, but another format is just the test itself has changed. So with the new test, there's a lot of technology-enhanced items that kids are gonna have to use on the computer itself, they'll have to highlight text, plotting, graphing, they're gonna have to demonstrate a knowledge that's a little deeper than what our old format would allow. The old format was a multiple-choice testing scenario. Another difference that is on the current assessment is that it has a performance component. So there are actually two 15-minute sessions that the kids have to participate in that cannot be scored electronically. They're gonna be all scored by hand. So they have to read text, highlight some things within that text, there are probing questions for them to answer, but then at the end, they have to formulate like opinions, or they might have to take up a position in an argument, and they'll have to do a writing portion on that informational text that they've read. And so that's a big piece to be able to, in a multiple-choice test, you can learn some testing skills, and you might be able to alleviate some answers based on your testing skills. And a performance assessment such as this, they're really gonna have to demonstrate their knowledge and be able to apply to the things that they've learned in that, in that performance setting. Another reason that we can't compare those two results, and one thing that we'll certainly be talking about that's going to be different for us is just the scoring for it. We, the new assessment will give you scale scores versus the percent correct scores. Scale scores are typically used on standardized assessments. In the old format, every kid basically took the same test. There were multiple forms of the test, and questions were rearranged, but it was basically all of the questions were drawn from the same pool. In the new format, moving forward, especially in 2016, it's going to be staged, adapted. So based on a set of questions, kids will take, generally speaking, the same 25 questions in the beginning of the test. How they perform on those 25 will lead them through different paths on the test. All will be grade-level material, but it will depend on their depth of knowledge and how they perform on those sets of questions, on where it takes them through. And those are generally, like I said, scored with a scale score, so that not every question is exactly the same, but over the course of the entire thing, it will allow you to be able to compare results unlike the percent correct, where every question is just simply based on you got X number right out of total number possible, and on those percents. So that's gonna be a little different. One other aspect is really kind of the change of the focus of the test, and it's really to get at the depth of knowledge, what our kids are going to be able to apply when they're testing, rather than just trying to be a criteria or a set mark like you had in the past, kind of that magic number, if you will, and so that's gonna be different. But the last piece on this slide is probably the most important piece, is the new assessment is just going to be one measure of our student's success. It's not designed to be the high states test that we've had in the past. The state's reassured us in several different meetings. I've been able to participate in a group that's called the Kansas Professional Leadership Team, and I get to go to these meetings usually once every couple of months, and really what's nice about that is it allows us to have kind of a sneak peek and a pipeline of information from the state. So I got to go and be a part of that group, and we developed some frequently asked questions and answers, and we were able to kind of get a little understanding of this new information. Ann's gonna talk here in just a little bit about just some of the changes in terms of like even vocabulary that's used with the new assessment and the new standards versus what we've been used to in the past. And that's a big change, and so something that we felt confident in, and the information that we've had in the past, and in my opinion, been very successful at, is all kind of behind us, and we're starting fresh. And so that's going to be a learning process for us all. But again, I think we have, we're gonna support the state in that philosophy, but this is just one measure of what we're looking at. We collect data, and we're a pretty data-rich district, and we're gonna continue to do that and look at lots of different avenues for our kids and their successes. The next few slides, we're gonna talk a little bit about timeline, what are we gonna do with this information? So, starting October 1, we got our preliminary data from the state on individual students. So that data came to Dr. Carlin, and it's gonna be in the form of a parent letter. We'll have a sample in a little while. None of this information is official, so we don't have any hard data to share with you tonight, we'll be doing that as that becomes available. But that, that piece is gonna be sent out to parents so that they can see that information. But that's just the first piece, is a parent letter that's gonna come out, and it has our individual scores that we, that we got from the state. Nothing is available for us to do any kind of disaggregating by classroom, CET, which is the company that helped design the assessment, they do not have that in their capabilities. So at this point, it's just gonna be sheets of paper, if you will, of individual data. We'll also get building and district reports, and again, we'll have samples of that here in a little bit, where we can start kind of making some decisions on our progress. We're gonna take those parent letters, once we confirm it, to do some validation of data, and we're gonna take those, and they'll be sent home to our parents the week of November 9th through 13th. Here's some other important dates, information. So we have from the 12th through the 31st to take a look at our data and validate. Really, the validation piece is just looking at each one of our individual kids and making sure that they participated at the right, attended center, if they were tested at the right attended center, it's going to be recorded back as such, because I've, you'll see down here on the bottom, we're gonna have all that information that will ultimately go into our building and district report cards at the end, so we have to do that. So we're gonna be meeting on Wednesday, the 14th, with principals, just to review what those steps look like, what are they gonna need to do to validate the data that they have. On the 26th, Karen, Renee, and Leanne will be attending our KSDE annual conference. They have, I believe, the first day that's going to be just about state assessments, and so we'll be learning some more information there. And so we'll be learning some more information there in terms of timeline and, and data analysis. On November 11th, again, we're going to meet with principals to create a plan for P D, which is professional development, on our new terminology and data analysis for this information. One of the pieces for the data analysis, the old standards, they, they got very, very specific. I really liked the old standards a lot because as building principal, working with new staff, if, if we looked at that information, I could go teacher by teacher and see how their classroom was performing in very specific ways. Like maybe it would be three-digit multiplication that they did poorly on. And I would be able to share that with a teacher, talk to them about that, identify ways that we can improve in those areas. Our new standards are not written like that, nor will we get data back that's that specific. They're very broadly stated. And so we're, we're going to come up with a plan on just what information we are, are going to get and then, and how we analyze it. How, what can we do with it and what can we do to, to help our instruction? So we'll be doing that on the 11th. And then the 11th through the 7th, principally, we work in with their staff through P L C staff meetings, again, kind of sharing that information from what we've given them. November 30th is the day that the state's going to come out with our building report cards. So we have, again, till the 31st of October to validate it. Then the state will take that information and they'll produce the report cards for us. We'll again look at those, make sure that all that data is accurate. And then that becomes public knowledge and released on December 8th. I believe we have a board meeting on December 7th and we'll be talking to you more about our, our specific data at that time. Leanne's going to come and share some more information.
Is this time for questions or?
Either way.
Just before we move on, I'm wondering on this whole data set, is that it's going to be processed for us and ultimately they will have building reports? That whole data sits in Topeka, I presume? And I'm just curious if we have a sense of who has access to all of that data?
Well, first, C E T E was the company that helped produce this assessment. And so as students were testing, that information went directly to them. Then it was, I guess, next release or put out through Kansas State Department of Education. And now they have it into their system as well so that we have access to it.
So, I mean, again, there'll be parameters on the data on how you can query for various pieces of information.
Sure.
And will learn over time what that is and?
Right. No different than what we did before. I mean, that was kind of the same format. C E T was a developer of our previous assessment as well. K S D handled all of that data initially and then we got it from them. And then so it just depends on the format. My understanding at this point is it will be similar. We'll get it like in an Excel format where we can manipulate some of the data in that way. Is that kind of what you're?
Yeah, and then ownership of the data. It's just, is it publicism versus?
Well, nothing is public at this point. And that's why on the 7th, we'll come and talk to you about our data because it will become official on the 8th. So we have really that month of October to, to validate that information. But nothing will be released until the 8th of December when the state board does that.
Mr. Hovind's right. This is new to all of us, the vocabulary. We're going to have to relearn state assessments again. But starting with how, how they're going to report it, they're going to report it in performance levels. So when you look at that, performance level descriptors are going to be those detailed descriptions of what a student should know and be able to do with reading and math. This is what the, the performance levels would look like. They will report it in terms of a level one through a level four. Level one being that a student is not performing at grade level and may need extra supports in the classroom. Level two would be a student who is doing grade-level work, as defined by the standards, but may not be at the level or rigor for college and career-ready. Level three would be that a student is performing at academic expectations but would be level, would be on track to be college-ready. Level four is that they're performing above expectations and again, would be ready for college, college or career. This is just another way to look at it. Level two is doing great, basic work, but again, not working at the level required to be college-ready. Something to keep in mind is that student performance has not declined. But if you remember when you guys were learning the standards and were, you know, presenting at Wichita, they were saying then that the standard, the new standards were fewer, clearer, and higher. The expectations are just different. This is a student report. And I'll try to take you through, kind of lead you through like the student report is telling us. But this is a student in Kansas. His name is Adam. These were just samples that were given to Mr. Hovind and his K P L T group. This report measures a student's understanding of college and career-ready standards. As an example in math, the shift requires a change in mindset as well as a change in instruction, going from procedural to conceptual understanding, procedural fluency, and real-world application. So this is grade-three math. What you see, it looks like a little fuel gauge. The top one is Adam's score. He's scoring a 229, which would put him at a level three, which we identified as someone who's on grade level and would be on track for college and career readiness. Then below that, you see where the school scores. The school median is 190, which is level two. The district was scoring 223, that's the median for the district. That would be a performance level three. And the state was scoring at a 186, which would be a level two. What you see here is a performance level descriptor. This would be anchor standard 10, claim one. And this is another one of those vocabulary pieces that we need to learn. A claim is just a huge area, which is reading. And again, it's anchor standard 10, which is close reading. Let's take a look at the second one to kind of go across so that you can see what a level two, a level three, and a level four would look like. But it's all about citing textual evidence. So a student's able to cite what the, what the text is about. Target would be a little bit under a claim. That would be targets one and eight. But a level-two student can identify explicit details in text. So in, in other words, they're able to look at the text and tell you what's right there. A level-three student would be able to go into that text and cite explicit or implicit text. So either it's right there or maybe they're just inferring that. That's what a student at level three can do. A student scoring at a level four can do both. They can cite explicit or implicit, give support, and based on information coming from one text or multiple texts. Okay, definitions. Again, this is something we're going to have to totally get used to because they're...